Okay, welcome everyone for today's council meeting, Thursday, July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six thirty P M. Roll call please. Present. Present.
Councilmember Juanita Molina.
Absent.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Absent.
Councilmember Catherine Solorio.
Present.
City Treasurer Michelle Lopez.
Present.
Thank you.
Please raise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have on the agenda, no additions, no deletions. I did get a call from the special assignments attorney. He did ask if he were gonna have him here and I told him that it would be fine not for him not to be here today until we appoint someone. So that's why we don't have a an attorney present for representing the city. But he did ask if that was something that we needed, but since we don't have any any potential litigation or anything on the agenda. So I I said to him that it was fine for him not to be present today. So with that being said, we can move on to the next item, which is public comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council? Oh, I didn't even see who is Alfaro? Oh, okay, I thought you were with the other group, sorry, I put you guys, no, go ahead, go ahead. I'm so sorry.
Hello, good afternoon, thank you council member for inviting me today. I am Anna Alfaro, the director of the Central Valley Women's Entrepreneur Center. This is a new program that the Fresno State University launched in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. We are part of the Office of Community and Economic Development of Fresno State. Our mission is to empower entrepreneurs with different resources, not charge, by the way, because we are also partners of S B A, the Small Business Administration. On your desk, you have a magazine from S B A that provides further information of all the services that all the partner centers offer across the United States. This is a women's business center and across the United States, there are more than four hundred centers. Only in California, there are twenty-one and the Central Valley Women's Entrepreneur Center is covering eleven counties. Also, you have a flyer with the description of our services and also the area that we are serving, basically eleven counties. And our headquarters are in Fresno, because of course, we are part of the university. And also, we are providing technical assistance and workshops training for people who want to start a business. Also, for people who hasn't existing one, we provide services to expand a business and not cost in English and Spanish. So basically, my proposal is that you allow us to have a workshops here in person for the party or community. Instead of they are gonna go to Fresno to receive those services. We would like to serve them locally. If you can provide us perhaps once or twice per month, a facility or venue for hosting workshops for entrepreneurs and also office hours. It's gonna be very convenient for the community, because for example, one of those services include planning. If a person has only an idea, but doesn't know how to register a business, for example. We are gonna provide assistance on one-on-one counseling sessions, how to register the business with the city of Paria, with the county of Fresno, state and federal. Additionally, for more mature businesses, we also provide, for example, how to register your business for getting government contracting. Or how to get access to capital for funding your business. And I mean, we have a lot of services and it is something that we would like to provide to the community for free. And that's my proposal, if you can provide us a venue to have this.
Do you have flyers that you can leave here for for like the people that do come in and when they pay their water bill, they can pick up a flyer?
Okay, and perhaps plan a workshop for your community as well.
Yeah, absolutely, that would be great. So yeah, Bertha can work with you on that and schedule something for you to do and then when you have the flyer, so we, yeah, so we can announce it and for the public to know.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so next we have public comments. Anybody from the public would like to address the council at this time, may do so?
Good afternoon, my name is Sandra Alvarez. One thing that I would like to ask is that with special meetings, is there a reason that they're at four thirty when people are still at work? Because there are some people that aren't able to attend when you put meetings at four thirty and I feel like you're doing it on purpose, so people don't attend. Thank you. Oh, and I do have questions in regards to the check warrants, so when you get there, since I've missed it twice. If you can please let me know, so I can come back and address those issues, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public? Hearing none, move on to the next item.
Can Dorothy put me in at six thirty-one?
She normally does, when you walk in.
Sixty, thank you.
Whatever time, did you write it down already? Normally, she does that. She always puts on the time you leave and the time you get here. So going on to the next item is consent calendar, now we're going to the consent calendar. I think there's one that we're gonna pull, I wanted to pull is for the item number three. And then you wanted to pull the item for the check warrants, is there any other items in the consent calendar? No, okay, so then with just those two, then we can have, do we have a motion to approve item number two?
Motion.
Sabrina, Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, there's four yes and one absent. And now we can go on to Ministerio Cristiano. Querías hablar algo sobre el programa o no más esperar el aprobó de la? Puedes pasar al coro por favor.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Erlinda Díaz, presidenta del Ministerio Cristiano Pentecostal, la voz de Dios. Me acompaña la hermana Ivonne, este, tesorera del ministerio. Y pues nosotros estamos, este, pidiendo la aprobación, por favor, si nos pueden prestar, este, la comunidad para darle comida a los hombres.
Okay, any questions on the council?
Yes, I had one, but as the, because I was looking at it and they're there till four P M on Friday. They're the ones for the three days, right?
There's Monday, Wednesday and Fridays. I think there, are they working with the schedule, the schedule, whoever schedules the community center?
They will have to be worked around, because if there's an event on Friday, they won't be able to have it.
I explained that to her earlier, so.
And if there's any funerals or anything during the week.
And do we have, do we have anything going on right now? Because I think I was told those soccers are doing indoor soccer right now.
Yeah, that's after.
That's in the evening?
Yeah, this is in the morning, this is for el lonche?
Sí, es en la mañana.
A la mañana, okay.
No, because it says four P M, that's.
Nine A M to four P M, so it's the soccer's after four. I just had a question about the dates, but if they're coordinating with.
I think that they need to coordinate with staff that have the actual calendar, we don't have that, so. Anybody from the public have any questions? Hearing none, so okay, now we can move on to the check warrants. I have a question, because I did mention this before. And I emailed Bertha and I had C C, Serta and Sabrina in regards to the stipend that was paid for June twentieth. I had mentioned that they should not receive the stipend, because they straight up refused to attend the meeting and walked out of the meeting. And when you do not attend and it's not excused, you don't get paid. As in any board that I go to, you do not get paid. And in a job, you don't get paid. This was not an absence, because they had an emergency, because there was something that was going on, it was, they just straight up walked out of here. So I asked staff to follow what the ordinance states and the law state where you don't get paid for those days. Especially when you refuse to attend, when there's an emergency, we understand that, it's like any job, you have sick days, you know, that happens. But when you refuse, that's unexcusable. And I did ask, and Sabrina did mention that, you know, not to give directives to count to staff, but it's not really about being giving directives. It's about following what the rules are. So I did notice that on the check warrants, they did get, they get, they did get their stipend. And I feel that they should reimburse the city, because they refused to attend on June twentieth. So with that being said, I will just speak my piece on that and there is no, there is no excuse, because you walked out.
I have a question, I have a thing too, I don't have a problem with it. If we weren't here, we didn't come, we want, we have to pay it back, we can do it. But if you're saying that there's no excuse, then then it should be across the board, because you, Sabrina.
Special meetings don't count, because we don't get paid for those, we don't. You get paid for regular meetings, read the rules. You get paid for the first meeting of the week and the third one, that's our stipend. We do not get paid for special meetings, because I don't get extra checks, unless you're you're saying that you're getting extra checks for
No, that's not what I'm saying.
For those special meetings, because special meetings are not part of it. You don't get paid for that.
So I don't have a problem, if that's what you feel, if that's what you feel, Bertha, I mean, I don't have a problem, they can, I can pay back.
You came, you came in and you refused to stay, that's what I'm saying, you refused to stay.
I don't, it's okay with me, but I missed one day out of three years and seven months, one day. She has missed more, because she went for a dinner when we had to have city business and she didn't come when we had to pay the bills, so hers needs to be deducted also.
No, you refused, you showed up and walked out, that's a difference.
She refused to pay the city bills, so she needs to be docked also, it's gotta be straight across the board.
Because you didn't wanna see Neil, our city attorney here.
If it's for one, it's for all, you're correct, Janie, that's it.
I did city business.
We'll just wait until the attorney comes in and we'll settle this, because you cannot make your laws yourself and you cannot give directives, bottom line, okay? That's it.
You walked out.
You walked out of a meeting too, so, you walked out of a meeting too, so should we not pay you for that day also, that whole night? The day you walked out, that you said you didn't wanna put up with any.
Because I didn't participate in the close session, that I found that it was not legal.
You walked out of a meeting, so you don't get paid for that either.
No, I didn't participate in illegal activities, Kathy, you do things illegally and I will not participate on that. So to me, again, you just wanna justify why, you wanna keep your money, go ahead, keep it, I'm just letting the public know. I'm letting the public know.
I don't go bankrupt, see, I don't do none of that, okay, I don't need it.
In a job, you would have been fired, so again.
You would have been fired for the way you treat the employees and the way you talk to the council, you would have been gone.
I'm sorry, but you're the one that comes in yelling. So at the end of the day, that's what I had asked and I know that it's really up to council and it's nothing that you can actually do right then and there. But that's something that you should have brought been brought up to us, we had several special meetings. And that should have been discussed, because again, when you come into council and because you see the city attorney and then you straight up refuse and walk out, you should not get paid. And that's on live stream, I said it on live stream, you walked out.
Just like she said, I agree with her, she said we were having an illegal meeting, it never was, it was, it was never confirmed, so she needs to be docked for that day also.
Sabrina?
I, I was part of that email and yes, that Alma asked for that not to be, that stipend not to be issued for that meeting. I think you just need to look into it, see if that.
It's in our ordinance and our municipal code.
And and provide that to all of us and yes, we can.
And just check, just let me tell you something. Every board that I've been on, they don't pay you if you don't show up. You cannot get paid for not showing up. So if you're, and that's because people don't show up, because there's other things that come up and they don't get paid. But when it's a straight up refusal, why is that an excuse for you to go ahead and say, well then, why are you fighting it?
That's understandable, I do, I I understand where you're coming from with that, but if we can just get the legal part of it, that's.
That is the law, that's taxpayers' money, that's just a no-brainer.
Okay, Sabrina, I would like for you to look in when she walked out that day, when we had that meeting too.
When I didn't participate in close session, that was not the whole day, no, I'm sorry, I don't get paid for special meetings, your illegal activities, okay? So with that being said, now, is there any other questions with the check warrants? Because I think there was somebody else that wanted to ask something else.
My question is, again, when are we gonna get a budget? We still haven't got an answer. We, Paria doesn't know how much money, but to me, with this check report and the descriptions, the detail to it, why is there overtime? Somebody had excessive overtime and yet you don't have a budget. There should, you shouldn't be running overtime, you shouldn't be running anything but essentials, what needs to be paid in order for the city to run? Bottom line, and here's overtime, gross overtime. And then you have attached to it, you have the credit card statements and you have me and Ed's. And you have pizza from Pizza Pirate, you have Dollar General. Again, Paria does not have a budget, I don't see anybody up here trying to get a budget. We have a finance director, are we ever gonna get a budget? Because we've had a finance director for what, a couple of months, maybe? And still no budget, nobody cares. So again, it looks to me, just like when people are using credit cards, so that way they don't have money and they're swiping their card. You're using taxpayer dollars, you're stealing from taxpayers, you are grossly, grossly misappropriating funds. Pizza Pirate, me and Ed's, and there's no budget. But all of you, just let's go swipe the card, let's use whatever money that's not ours. Are you answering to the taxpayers out here that you're using their money for Pizza Pirate, me and Ed's? Overtime? And people don't even have water and getting water shut off, but yet you guys, oh, let's do overtime. But you can't get notices out timely to people to let them know that their water's getting shut off? No budget, any answer maybe? Anybody working with the finance director to find out when a budget is gonna get done, when we're gonna have a workshop? So that way we know, everybody knows what is negative?
Do we have?
I can, if you're done, I can respond.
Do we have a date?
So yeah, so ever since finance director came on a couple of months ago, he's prioritized his list and the budget and the budget, well.
It's been actually, in his defense, it's it's been, it's been, we've been asking for the the budget prior to him getting here.
So that means that everything that we, that Paria was paying out to other agencies to try to work on a budget, all of that was just wasted money. And now we have a budget, a finance director and two months and still can't get a budget, two months.
So we're we're close and yeah, all of that.
We've been hearing close, everybody's been hearing close.
And I'm sure you can share with you, but we're very close to getting you guys.
We've heard that.
And that is a priority, so that is, one of the priorities was getting a finance director.
Then why is there still spending continued, overtime, come on.
We are adapting to austerity and we are asking all departments to cut back on overtime and spending, absolutely.
You had the CPA office up here telling you, stop spending, don't spend, if you're gonna spend, spend on a finance director. Finance director still can't get us a budget.
No, 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 he's, he's been there two months and they're working on that.
If he was qualified, he would already have a budget, because everything's been worked on, so you guys have been, Paria's been paying money.
In the finance director's defense, he just been, he's just been here two months. But we did pay for Daryl to do and have them work. And he had mentioned at the presentation that he had that he was gonna be presenting a budget and he never did. So I don't know what happened to that, I don't know why he said that and it was never presented, it was never done. And it was, you weren't really involved in that process, because it was, at that time, it was the last city manager. But he did come here and did present to us, if you remember, and said that he was going to present a budget for us and then we never got to that. So I don't know if that person is working with our finance director to give him what he already started on, so that they can finish that. And I do agree with, I've been saying this about the budget, because we were supposed to approve a budget by June thirtieth. Every agency, every city and the state has to do it before the end of the fiscal year. And we haven't done that. And we're not in compliance, which is really, it's not good, because it puts our grants at risk. So when the state finds that you're not, you don't have a budget, a spending budget, because you're, that's why you have to have that budget, so that you can show that you have this amount of money and you're gonna spend it. So you have to give that to the, well, the state needs to see that when we apply for grants. And when they don't see that we have that, that can eventually, once we get these grants going, can harm those funds. And that's why I had been pushing on that, but you know, there has been some transition and he's only been here two months, but we did have someone here. Four other individuals that were working on that and never got anything done. And and you're right, there's a lot of overtime, I've seen one check that was five thousand, just one payroll.
It was twenty-nine something hours of overtime.
And that's why I I've seen it, didn't say anything to staff, but you know, because I've always, I've always expect them to, I expect them to look at that stuff.
But your council, right, can't you put a freeze on additional spending, other than what is necessary?
Well, the only way we found out now about those hours of overtime was because of these checks that were on here. And the reason that happened was because since there was that Juneteenth, um, holiday, um, we didn't have the payroll done in time for them to do the payroll, because normally council does not see payroll. We don't see that.
Well, it's protected information. I'm surprised that it's on there for us to see it as well.
Actually, payroll and taxpayers' money, you can see that because you could see that even with the.
So just none of their, their personal information is disclosed?
Yeah, but that doesn't come to us. Like, it doesn't come to us to see it, what everybody's getting, you know, that's, doesn't come to us for us to approve. That's what, why we have the Finance Department Administration and them to oversee all of that.
What's actually being, again, spent, um, without a budget. And I think that, like I said, I mean, this is taxpayer money. And for people not to be able to put stops to something when it's taxpayer money and you, people can't do their jobs, that's really not acceptable. It's not acceptable, and it shouldn't be acceptable to either one of your standards as well.
Yeah, no, I, I.
I ask you to maybe put a stop to any overspending that should not be happening, which is overtime. Pizza Pirate, Starbucks. I've seen Starbucks on another check register from previously. Like, these are not things that should be on a city credit card. Use your own funds. You don't have to use taxpayer funds. You're taking money away from the city that taxpayers are paying, which includes all of you. If you were to get money from Greenbrier, this either wouldn't be happening. But again, none of you are pursuing any of that. So the city can run, but the people in charge here are not doing anything. I don't feel any of you are doing anything to actually look into these matters. That matter to everybody. Including you. You guys pay taxes here.
Yeah.
You guys can't even put a, a freeze on your own stipends in order you want to. And I see on here other things that I will be asking also. Because again, you're just using taxpayer dollars grossly and without any care.
So now that we have a Finance Director, Chief, um, does, I know that with our last Finance Director, we give everybody a budget and they can't go over that budget. Is that being done now with, I don't know if he wants to answer that or not. It's up to you.
Yeah, go ahead, Israel.
It's okay. It's up to you. Okay, okay.
Okay, so, uh, the process that we started is first, we're trying to fix all the issues from the last previous year. Make sure all the allocations go where it's supposed to go. And then we have developed budgets for each department and for the grants. So we have had meetings for the last three weeks, for example, Police Department, Parks, Grants. And then we have explained, like, this is what happened this past fiscal year. This is the proposed fiscal, uh, budget for the next fiscal year. So today, actually, we just, I just had a meeting with them, with the City Manager and Assistant City Manager to see, to tell them that this is what I seen, this is the propose, give me your feedback. And then we're gonna have one workshop probably with council members and be ready to present two weeks or three weeks.
Okay.
It has been the process to do the budget for the next, for this fiscal year. But yeah, we have concentrated on each department and each funding.
So let me understand. So I'm hearing that you had to take some time. So when you became employed with the city of Partier, you had to take some time to arrange things because everybody works differently, right? I mean, I like things organized my own way, not somebody else's way. So is that what you're saying, that you had to organize things to suit your way of accounting?
Review that everything that was there is correct. Yes. Because I didn't want to propose something based on incorrect data.
Okay, I can appreciate that.
We have data from the last one, and that's why we have been reviewing to make sure that if we have a hundred dollars here, it's supposed to be there. And if there's some revenue that was misallocated, it gets put in the correct time. Also, at the end of, at the end of June, there are some pending charges that we had to wait a little bit in July to make sure that everything gets recorded by June 30.
So you're hoping that your budget workshop will be in a couple of weeks, you said?
Well, actually, I don't think we have time for a budget workshop because we're in July. You need to get that done. And, um, if there was already working on the budget, then whatever it is that you have, you can come back and amend your budget when there's changes that need to be made, but you can't push it out to the end of the year. Here we are in July, middle of July, and we don't have a budget. We were supposed to have it before the end of the, of the fiscal year. So budget workshop, that's gonna prolong the process even more. And to me, it's, it's, again, you have funding that is supposed to come to the city. And when they, when you don't have a budget done, when you don't have, um, audits done, that puts your, those funds at risk because the state's not gonna wanna give you the funding because you're not in compliance. This is why, and, and I think even Javier knows this with even Fresno Cog, there was, uh, other cities that were not in compliance with audits. And so they got stricter this time. They said, you're not gonna receive funds until you're in compliance. So to me, it's like, I don't think we have time for budget workshops. It would have to be just a budget that you guys can work on and figure out what we're, where we're at, bring it to council. And then if you need to go back and amend that existing budget because other things do come up, that's been done before where you amend those budgets. So that's something that we should look into instead of trying to do a budget workshop. But it's too late in the game now.
So my, another question is, since the procedure is kind of changing because of the delay, at that point, how, what steps should the public take in order to get, request a copy of that budget?
They're still presented to the council, so you'll still see the budget itself. It just won't be a discussion about the budget. Like, you won't be able to, okay, on this, for this department, we, we're gonna work on this amount, because that's usually what we do. And then you allocate certain budgets for every department. Like I had mentioned to Bertha, you know, for, um, things for council, you know, you budget on that. And then it's budgeted for council, X amount of dollars. You don't have to keep bringing it back to council for every item to get approved because it's already budgeted for it. Like I mentioned before with the, the floor, it was budgeted for it. So when you budget for that, that's already been approved. You don't have to bring it back again. But if you're gonna make an adjustment to the amount, then that's when you have to bring it back to council to approve the adjustment.
So is the public have a va- availability to, like, a packet, like, for the audit?
Yeah.
And how do we request that?
That usually, yeah, at the meeting, or they'll post it online too, so you could see it before the meeting.
So it should be with the agendas?
Yes.
Online?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the, the budget part. Because I know you're saying that about the deadlines, we have to do them in June and stuff, but if I remember correctly, when we came into council, um, the budget was brought to the council in November.
A continuance.
No, it was the budget. It was the estimated, it was the estimated budget was in November, and it got approved afterwards. But then, and I did ask.
Was that last year?
Last year, for twenty twenty-two, for twenty twenty-two. And I did ask the City Manager at that time because I did go through the internet, and I think I mentioned it, that I went through the internet and I saw when the budget was amended. They got fixed, like, in March, I believe. And I did question, I said, why didn't it not come back to the city council when it got, when it got fixed? Because it was like half a million dollars, and to me, it's like a half a million dollars, it should have come back to council so we could approve that budget that got fixed.
Supposed to.
And it never did, and it never did. And I did question it several times. I did bring it up to the attention.
So what you're talking about is a, it's a continuance. You can actually do a continuance. But it is, it's, okay, may I speak now? So a continuance is like you're rolling over the same existing budget that was there last year. And you roll it over to the following year. But then you come back and amend it. Like I said, you bring it back with amendments to the, because it's not gonna be the same every year, you know, from the past. But what the problem that Partier has always had is that we always ended up doing those continuance, uh, budget rollovers every single time.
Well, and at that, I had asked.
That's what used to happen.
There's more matching.
But, but this is why it's important to have the budget workshops in the beginning of the year. And you're supposed to actually start, like, last year. Should have started on the budget workshops.
Yeah, I was saying.
This way, by the time, you know, you go back and forth, you know, with staff and meeting, then they would come to an agreement of what is gonna be on the budget. Then you approve it before the end of the fiscal year. But what pa- past practice was, again, staff just rolling it over because they would not do the budgets. But you would do a continuance, and that's another thing that we could have done before the end of the fiscal year, but we didn't do that. We didn't even, we didn't even continue the existing budget for the next year. So we have nothing approved right now.
My whole thing is that taxpayer money should not be used for personal things. I mean, and I'm sorry, when you're looking at it and you're seeing Pizza Pirate and you're seeing all of these different little charges, that's not something that a city credit card should be used for. If you're gonna use stuff for like that, then use your own and then get reimbursed. Like, that is not, that's not pleasurable for people to see, especially thinking, oh, this is what my tax dollars are going to.
Well, what I would recommend is probably bringing that back to the council in the next meeting so we can actually eliminate all those credit cards that are out there and have, like, we used to have one credit card. Because a credit card is supposed to be for urgent matters, like something that can't wait to get invoice, and you cannot, you know, go wait to that process. That's what that's for. That's like a backup plan. Like, okay, you know what? We can't wait to get it approved. Get the credit card, go get it done, fix whatever needs to get fixed.
You have a Home Depot card. City Partier has a Home Depot card.
What happened is that there's credit cards everywhere left and right. So if maybe, uh, sort of, if possible, you could bring that for the next council meeting for we, for us to eliminate all those credit cards and only have one credit card. And, and then, uh, bring up the process that you said you were working on and how they check out that credit. Because I think you said you worked on a process.
A credit card policy, and actually, Israel has been working on that, so.
So it hasn't been done yet?
Uh, yes, actually, we did implement it.
Okay.
And we do have a policy.
More extensive one.
Yeah, it's, so, I, I will, I will share with you, so, uh, in our, in my budget, I have a budget for employee recognition, especially events, and that includes, that consists of beverages and food when we have special occasions. So it's not an everyday or a monthly thing. So the pizza you're talking about is the DUI checkpoint. We had a DUI checkpoint, a multi-agency DUI checkpoint. And when we invite these other agencies, similar to what they do with us, in kind, they feed us.
Right.
So in kind, we fed everybody pizza and sodas. So that was a DUI checkpoint we had last month. And so we have, we try and have a DUI checkpoint to suppress the DUIs in this city that reduce fatalities and traffic accidents and keep the, the community safe. So when we do these events, that's when you will see that. And if it's an expense that, uh, the council feels is not necessary or, or excessive, then I don't have a problem with them eliminating it, but we've done this historically. And all other agencies that we assist with their checkpoints, they do the same thing in kind. So that's why I'm sharing that with you. And it's not a monthly or a weekly thing. It's whenever we have these operations, we do big sweeps, probation, parole sweeps for violent offenders to keep them off the streets and keep this community safe. We do that for other agencies that assist us. So we got Sanger, Selma, Reedley Fowler, CHP, Fresno PD, all these agencies that come out and help us. We feed them because the, the overtime that we're saving with the, all of those agencies are here is tens of thousands of dollars. And for a few hundred dollars that we could feed them and show our appreciation, that's what we do. All the other agencies do that. But it would be up to the council if they wanted to eliminate it. I wouldn't have a problem.
See, and this is the problem, again, is that with your explanation, it makes it valid, right? But when you're using a city credit card and that's the only information we have with no description, that right there throws people off. And that can anger people. It angers me. I have taxpayer dollars that come to Partier. My mother-in-law, my family lives here, and they're taxpayer dollars. I have friends here. They're taxpayer dollars. So when there's not an explanation or an understanding, and I have to come up here to get that understanding, and you gave it, it's valid. There's not a problem. But again, there's a process. There could have been an invoice submitted to the city for that reimbursement or those funds to be, to where you don't have to put it on a city credit card.
I think, I, I think it looks a lot because of what I've said, that all those other credit cards, so, because before, when we only had one credit card, it didn't look like all these transactions, you know? Now you see all these transactions. So if, yeah, so if you have, again, if it goes back to one credit card, and Chief, I think that that's, that's good for you to do that because it does, you know, it makes them feel like they're welcome and we appreciate your time, you know? Um, so that, that is a valid one, but, but there's other transactions that are happening that are not valid. And that's why people look at that. Like, I keep bringing this one up where there's a gas station charge. It's still happening. I still see a twenty-dollar gas station credit card charge. When we have ARCO that they can put gas here. So, and then the, the officers can go to the police, uh, to the school. So I don't see the justification on that. So I don't think it's the police department that's abusing it. I think there is other people that are, are abusing that. And that's when you have to go back down to one credit card because now they're able, now you're able to actually see the, the transactions more often because it's only one. Then trying to see who has one, who's checking, you're not gonna be able to check everybody's card and go through everybody's, uh, statements. So if you go back to one, then you have more control of that.
I, I do know with, with the new procedure and policy that was implemented by our, our new Finance Director, which he did a really good job on, is that some of the restrictions and, and the stipulations on there that, uh, if there is a pattern of unnecessary spending or abuse, it can't, that credit card can be removed and suspended.
It should just be removed.
Or permanently removed or temporarily respe- suspended. And we, we have, we have been focusing on that, and we have reached out to all of the, the department heads and have told them to be cautious and very conscientious about their spending. So we have seen a reduction in the use of the credit cards, but it's, it's a process. So it's something we are, we're, we're not ignoring. We're not dismissing, but we are addressing.
Opinion? It would just, this is just my opinion. You guys can do what you need, you see fit. But, um, there's no need for everybody to have a credit card. Because if you have one person that's gonna monitor that, then that, they will monitor that one statement all the time. But from what I've seen from the past to now, it's worse now with all these people that have the credit cards. Before you, Bertha, you know, we've talked about this, where you said that it was not like it is now. Because most of the time when I ask you, you don't know what's going on because before it was easier to control and monitor. And now there's so many.
One credit card, and I did the statement, so I knew who had it, I knew who used it, I knew what it was for, and I knew, and I had the receipts.
Yeah.
I don't even see the, the invoices anymore.
Yeah, so see, that's why there's, there's a problem, because that's what's, you know, kind of going through the cracks here where things are sneaking in and nobody knows about it. Because admin should, like I always say, it's admin that one that should be aware of what's going on with their departments. But, you know, if you have it back to how it used to be run, I think that that would be a better thing. But it's up to you guys to bring it to us if you want to do that. Because, um, we could only suggest, but at, at the end of the day, it's the control of the, uh, the administration. So this way, when there is discrepancies and, and something does come up, it, it's gonna fall on the administration. That's not council's, uh, control.
Okay, I have a question. Uh, that gas that you guys are talking about, is that, uh, city vehicles or is it a personal vehicle?
It will never tell you.
You'll never know, Bertha, on the card?
No.
We, we would have to, we'd have to simply look into it and, and we could bring that out.
That's just what came to my mind.
And that's even if there's cameras in those areas because it was in Sanger. It was not even here.
I know, um, I, the mayor has spoken to, to me about this before, and I told her that we used to do a log, and everybody who put gas had to put the, the truck number, the.
Mileage?
The mileage and things like that, which made it more difficult for them to be, to, for it to be misused. So we used to do a log like that, and every time they put gas, they had to put that information in. Because you can see the mileage that you put the last time doesn't add up, so something's not right.
Yeah. Well, that'd be a good idea to go back to that, Bertha.
Or just remove that credit card, so that way there's no possibility.
Can I also add? So, uh, that is, that is actually a practice that we exercise with the Police Department. And because we have that relationship with the school district and because we have that agreement, we have that established already. So what I've been working on recently is trying to get all the, all the departments on that. So Public Works, uh, whoever has transportation. So we did reach out. I had my, uh, my sergeant reach out to the school district to ask, to request to have that policy implemented and add, uh, Public Works currently. We're in the process of doing that, and it wasn't as, as simple as, uh, a yes or a no. They have to take it before their board, and their board has to approve it. So it's, it's a little longer process, but we started that process about two months ago.
That's good. That's good.
Hopefully we will have that in effect soon and that will control a lot of.
It, it, to me, it's, it, it's just because you, if you have ARCO here, but you're, you're gonna go to Sanger to go put gas.
That, that doesn't. Out of the area, yeah.
Like why?
Two, if you have an op, that option there, um, even if you come in the morning and pick up the cart and go fill it up or whatever. Um, or go fill it before you drop it off at the end of work. There's no, no need to, um, be going out of town, um, around Parlier to be filling up or putting gas. At those, um, and that's what brings up the questions on charges. Why are they putting gas out of town? Why is there this?
It makes it look like it's, yeah, suspicious, you know, like why are you doing that when you have the opportunity to fill up the tank here?
And now if there's, if we get to use the district, then there's two, two places you can go put gas.
And even with one, it's still enough. Because I'm like, it's not like they have so many vehicles there that they have to wait in line forever to get gas.
The only, the only challenge we've seen at, at times, uh, more times than we, we had assumed that, uh, so the gas pumps at the school district. Are out of gas or.
Oh, cause everybody goes.
So during those occasions, we put out an email to the officers that, uh, the pumps are down, use ARCO. So you'll see, so having those two options in case one is down, the other one's available.
And it's explainable because the officers are always driving. So yeah, I understand that. But, you know, Public Works is technically just here. So, um, I, I've never seen that happen before. It's just now that it's, it's again, and it's because of the credit cards. That they now they have it at their, they have it in their possession all the time. Easier for them to just, yeah, put gas. But, um, yeah, I think that that's a good thing. I'm glad that you're communicating with, um, the school and, and follow their lead. On how they're doing their documentation on, on, on the, on the gas too. There's, that's good.
That's mileage, it has the, the unit number, it has all that, so we log it all in there. Yep.
Okay, I think that was it. Any other questions?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, during, okay.
I make a motion, motion for approval of one and two, one and three, sorry.
Sabrina, do I have a second?
Second.
Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for yes and one absent. Okay, we can move on to the next item, item number four. Bertha.
I just wanted to bring this to the council's attention. There's the annual conference, the Lee of California City's annual conference. Um, mayor, you are usually the delegate for that conference, the voting delegate for the city. So if you plan on attending that, we could make the reservations and the accommodations for you. And if anybody else is going to attend, I need to know. So, um, we can have one or two alternate voting delegates. So whoever is going, whoever we are allowing to go, let me know so that I can make these arrangements. Also, mayor, I know you've mentioned to me that there's a city clerks portion to this conference and you asked me to go last year. So, um, we're gonna ask Dorothy if she also wanted to go to this. So that she, she can attend the city clerks, um, conference as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd like to go to the conference.
It's October sixteenth through the eighteenth.
And mayor, if you're not, if you're gonna go, I'll be an alternate.
I'm gonna check.
You can.
No, it's the, the delegate and the alternate. Yeah, but it's usually one that votes and the alternate, that's probably always happening. Um, yeah, I think that would be fine. Just wanna make sure I have anything else scheduled. Yes. Um, yeah. And that's for Dorothy as well, right? Okay, and Bertha, okay. Is there any questions? Um, is there any other questions from the council? And what other subjects are there? Because I know that for the delegates, it's for voting purposes, but what other subject is, is? You, you didn't check on it after all? What's the expense gonna be like? Cause if that's everybody, then that's like, what's the expense gonna? Per person?
I'm not going.
Can you give?
No, I, no, I'm not going.
Yeah, can you give us, we can, we can, um, approve it, but we can bring it back. Like that way you can, cause I think you need to have the reservations, what should have been done today, huh? Do we know what the budget was from last year? Cause I know that last year there was budgeted amount, but I don't think anybody went anywhere.
Well, if I recall correctly, uh, for city council, it was about ten thousand that was spent for the whole year. So I don't know how much is for the, yeah. Budgeted, I think it's, uh, probably more, but you guys only spent like ten thousand, well, this, it was assigned only ten thousand.
So it was ten thousand for that one?
I know the year before when we did.
No, more because not everybody went. I think it was just Janie.
The four of us that went last year. Yeah, the four of us.
That was.
That was the only ones that went.
I didn't go to that one.
That was the only one we went to too. But I think the, I think in twenty twenty-two was like, when they was asked by the finance director, by the mayor, how much was in the budget for the council. Um, if I remember correctly, I think she said it was like eighteen thousand. And I think it was like in November and she said they had like eight thousand left or nine thousand left or something. That was November twenty twenty-two, that, when it was asked during the budget.
Then maybe if we can get an update of what our balance is, because you can't really go over what's been budgeted.
I said, I'll wait, I'll wait to do the reservations.
Yeah, but, and August first will still be okay, right? I don't know.
You, um, as, as you know, mayor, that it's hard to reserve these cause they get sold out. So you might have to stay in a hotel where you're gonna have to walk. We've had that before.
I'm just saying, cause we don't have a budget. If we would have had that, we would have been able to see what we had.
The prior, well, I, I, we didn't use anything, did we?
No.
This year?
Yeah. This past, the twenty-three.
I guess just approve it and if, and then come back to us with, in August.
With numbers, I don't know.
Cause you could still counsel.
Yes.
If you need to.
It was time, Bertha, today was the early, um, early bird. It ended today.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If I, if we, if you guys approve it, I'm gonna go and do it.
Just go ahead and do it and then let us know what the amounts are. Is there any questions from the public? That way we can make a motion? Huh? Oh, you don't wanna say something about it. I get it, it's the budget.
So what's the whole point?
I get it, it's the budget. Oh, can you speak into the mic? She said nobody heard.
Sabrina, the mayor, Diego, Dorothy, and me.
Okay. Yeah, um, okay.
The voting delegate will be the mayor.
And then the alternate is Sabrina.
I already got that.
Okay. So there's no questions from the public? Hearing none. Um, so do you have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three?
Second.
And Janie, all those in favor? Motion carries for yes and one absent. Okay, we can move on to the next item. And that is city engineer. But it says on console.
Yeah, it's, it's his project, but I'll, I'll present it today. It's, it's, this is what you have here. Um, is these sampling stations, we installed that Maxco, um, and that, um, Fowler Packing. So those projects are complete, so, um, the sampler's in, it's actually in use. Uh, and it's, it's a project that, that, it's been in, in the log for a while now. So now we're at the point where we're, we're gonna file the notice of completion if, if accepted here tonight.
Didn't somebody ask about that the other day? The last, I think somebody asked about that. If that was already inputted, I mean.
Yeah, somebody kinda mentioned it.
I think so.
Okay. I, it's, I think it's, it's hard to tell when it's completed, cause you just see the tanks out there, right?
Yeah, this, this is for the wastewater sampling behind.
The which one?
The wastewater sampling, so it's kinda like underground.
Oh, the one over here?
Yeah, on Maxco.
Oh, that one. So there's so many that I don't even know which one. So it's the one with the, the one that we, we had approved.
Yes, that's the monitoring station.
That it took a long time to get approved. Okay, all right.
I had a question, I had a question for Javier. Javier, so I, I remember when we did that, the monitors and we approved them to have them put into these two businesses. The main concern was because, um, some of the businesses, I think it was Maxco, the, they use a lot of ink. And the ink was going into our, into the groundwater, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So these monitors, they're gonna eliminate that, correct? Is there any way that they turn off that, 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 um, the ink's gonna go back in the water system or?
Monitor.
Yeah, since then, we worked with, with Maxco, so to their credit, they fixed it all and they had, they hired, they got a new process to get cleaner waste off of their site. So they've already done that, but this project was going to make sure that the water coming out of the plant is gonna be sampled. I think it's once daily, um, and that sample gets stored in a little sampling case. And then we go and pick them up at the end of the week, test them, see how, um, see how bad and clear the water's coming out from the facility. So it is randomized, yes.
So the ink will be, the ink will be eliminated, right?
They've already fixed the problem.
So that's, that's fine already.
Yes, they've already fixed the problem. They've, they've done a good job working with us on, on fixing that issue.
Yeah, that's, that was part of what was approved before. Um, okay, so is there any questions from the public?
Does this suffice the issue of not being able to drink the water? Cause you know how Parliers had so many issues with the drinking water and people now having to buy water all the time in Parlier? That will that fix that issue? Is that what was part of the issue?
No, no, so this is two different, um, the TCP project, the filters, that's gonna fix the water. Um, this is only for the sewer. So when, when, when plants have a lot of waste, uh, it goes into our sewer. And sometimes if it's too much, it's hard for us to, to process that.
Okay, it costs the city more to clean it up.
And then the TCP is the one that's almost done too, right?
Yes.
And that's the one that's hard to tell because I tell you, everybody sees the tanks and they're like, okay, well, I just see the tanks, but it doesn't, they. Think it's supposed to be relocated. I know, I was wanting to think that too.
There's a lot of progress.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay.
Javier, so I know we're monitoring, just monitoring it, I know that. So if for some reason, we're showing that it's still going into the source system. The, the ink and all this stuff, so what, what is our plan for that?
Uh, we have a, um, a fee schedule that's based off of how contaminated essentially the effluent is. And the higher the, the, the ink or whatever's in, in their discharge, the more they get charged. I mean, it got to a point where they're paying tens of thousands of dollars a month, so, so they're, they fixed all that. Um, and so it, it definitely, you know, it's a big motivator to fix your, uh, your systems.
The way, the way Monrique has explained it was, it's because that's why they're putting that monitor. So they can see how much of it is getting into our system, so that we know how to rectify that problem or charge them more, because it's gonna cost us more. That's why we installed those monitoring systems, so that we can monitor them. So that when they go check it, they can tell them, okay, you're, you're over, exceeding the amount that's getting in. And then they, they're, that's the way they're gonna communicate. That's the process.
So who's the one that gets the reports on the monitoring?
Uh, that's our public works department.
The city would always get that. Um, any other questions? Okay, so that we have a motion to approve. Kathy, do I have a second? Who is it?
Either one.
Okay, Janie, Kathy and Janie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, for yes and one absent. All right, let's move on to the next item, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four, and this is again Javier.
Good evening, uh, so I don't, I, I think I've ever brought change orders to the table, but these are, um, on, on. Um, today here, we have the approval of, um, authorizing approval of the following change orders. Uh, to the construction contract with Clark Rose for the construction of the TCP removal treatment systems. So, um, we have currently our TCP project going on. And as we're, some of these items, and I can kinda talk like the bigger ones, like. For example, um, item number two, wells five eight and well eight, those two wells have been shut down, um, out of service for over twenty years. This project is bringing them back online, so adding more wells to our system, um, which is great. Um, but what's, uh, what, as we are pulling those pumps and as we're gonna, uh, fix those pumps and make them, you know, rectify them. Uh, and, and make them pretty much brand new. Um, this is a perfect time to, to essentially come in and rehab the well. Um, shock it and, and, um, add, add chlorine tablets and, and do a video of it. And, and, uh, essentially pressure treat it, uh, to keep. It's, it's, it's just, uh, it's a fancy cleaning system that they perform for these wells. And, and what that does is the new pump that you put in there, the new system they put in there, the new filters. If you clean out your existing well, you have less problems down the line, um, with things getting, you know, contaminants entering your system. Or, um, or, you know, other, um, other things getting loose from the well down the line. So, uh, right now is a perfect time to just give them a rehab when, instead of waiting for five to ten years. After we install a TCP project's filters, um, to then do the rehab. So every now and then you have to do those rehabs, usually it's around twenty years. And so we, we just think it's the best time to do it now before the filters are connected.
Javier, is that, uh, where the pole's gonna be removed?
Uh, no, so the, the additional light pole is on well eight. It's on, it's, it is on one of those sites where we're bringing it back to life. Um, yeah, that light, there, it hasn't been working for over twenty years because the well has been out.
They have not.
No, it's, it's a giant light that allows you to, to see, like a big parking lot light.
Yeah.
Um, allows you to see what you're working at night. If there's an emergency, you show up to the, to your well site. You know, you turn on the pump, you, you troubleshoot it. Um, and since it's, that site's been down for so long, nothing's been operating there.
So, uh, excuse me, I'm not done yet. So that's the value of the thirteen thousand dollar lamp, right? But we are gonna use the existing one, bring it back to life again, or we're gonna have to purchase another one for thirteen thousand?
It's a brand new one, twenty foot tall, six foot footing in the ground.
And what happens with the existing one?
Does this have to do with the change order?
Yeah, because it's part of that.
It's, uh, number four.
Okay, the, the question that I have for you.
I haven't finished yet, Alma. No, but I haven't finished.
Is it justifiable on the change order? Cause I've always talked to you about change orders. So in, in your professional experience, is what, what you're seeing before you justifies the change order?
Yes, yes, uh, and that's why my recommendation is to approve these change orders because we.
Professional and that's why I wanted to ask you, you're recommending that because I'm not the professional you are.
But see, since we don't know, it's good to ask, so the community could know also, cause that is their tax dollars, thirteen thousand. So that, that existing one, what's gonna happen with that one?
Um, it's, it's, it's partially destroyed, it's, it's sold.
It's sold already? Okay, that's just my question.
Yeah, it's, it's so, it's so bad that it would cost you more to fix it than.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so thank you for explaining that as far as the change order, cause that's all I, I really. That's what we pay you, the top dollar you get paid to make those decisions.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, being that said, is there any questions from our public on this change order? What's, uh, the total amount?
Um, the four hundred eighty-three thousand, yeah.
Four hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-six dollars.
How much is that gonna, uh, tap into the actual project now? Because that's gonna actually take away from the project itself.
Yeah, so this, um, is, is, cause it's a seventeen million dollar job. So this is still in the contingency of the project. It's so small relative to the seventeen million.
I get that, that we have seventeen million, but that doesn't mean that because we have seventeen million, we're gonna go ahead and spend.
No.
Is it gonna take away from anything else?
No.
That may. That may come our way in the future because that's the purpose of having the seventeen million so that you can actually depend and rely on it for future service repairs and stuff like that and maintenance. There you go, maintenance.
Yeah, so the 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 funds we have for the maintenance and all that, that's not being touched with this project. That's gonna be left in in the city for maintenance and for operations. Um, this is this is only tapping into the contingency of the state funds that we received, which is allocated from the state water board.
Okay.
Yes.
So Javier, so um because it says right here that you're working to the amendment, to the second amendment, to increase the funding amount.
Yes.
So the extra money that you're at the funds that we're gonna ask you're asking for will go for the additions?
Yes.
The new things that we need to do. So we don't know if we have that money to do these yet?
Um, so so since we're using up that contingency, uh, we want the state to pay us to to pay us more contingency, right? So that just in case something else happens, um, we have contingency right there as well. So, yeah.
Okay, any questions from the public? Hearing none, so do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four?
Motion.
Second.
Janie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for yes and one absent. And next item, resolution twenty twenty-four thirty-five, and that is Finance Director.
Janie.
Janie.
Yeah, good evening. So uh, on this resolution, we're asking for the authorization to submit an application to the Bureau of Justice Assistant Body Warm Camera Policy and Implementation Program to support law enforcement agencies for five hundred thousand for three years. So if approved this, this is gonna help to support the digital evidence management and integration demonstration projects for body body warm cameras. Is selected for an award authority to execute all related documents will be presented. Uh, a little bit of background, so this grant will fund a dedicated position to manage video evidence. This position will be filled by a sworn police officer whose sole responsibility will be to manage the Parler PD Body Warm Camera Program. This grant also will fund some hardware hardware for new offices officers, computers, and a screen for the officer in charge of the BWC program. And there's no city match for this grant.
Okay, so who is is were you gonna give us an update with California Consulting as far as how they're managing all the grants?
Yes, I can do that.
They will be they're gonna be doing this one as well, right?
Uh, actually, no, I I think we're gonna handle this one because that's and the grant, it's five hundred thousand dollars, so it allows the the staff member that we're gonna dedicate to this position to handle all the downloading of the evidence, uh, anything that has to do with the body worn camera system as well as manage the grant.
So they would actually do the reporting as well?
Yeah, I, yeah. Yeah, and it's 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 not that it's not that complicated. I I think we can manage it. And that's why and the other thing is it's uh it's pretty significant and profound is that it's there's no match to it. So if we get the money, we don't have to come up with like normally it's it's half, but it's it's a really good deal.
No, I I get that. I I support that. Uh, my concern has always been is the reporting.
Right.
Because what's the point of saying, oh, we got five hundred thousand or we got a million or two million? When later on, you didn't do the reporting the way you're supposed to do and then we have to pay back. So that's why my whole thing is the reporting and making sure that we do that and.
I I think we have that option. So if if we need California Consulting's assistance on this, then we can bring them in as well. And there's always that ten percent administrative fee that uh that'll allow us to bring them in on that. But it 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 appears though that it's it's not as comprehensive as many of the other grants are, which are very extensive and require a lot of lot more experience. We think we can manage it, but it's at the point that we feel that it's it's getting a little more difficult. I think we can bring in California Consulting on that.
But just keep in mind that if you have to bring in California Consulting, that person that's designated to that position is no longer gonna be in that position because we don't wanna pay for two.
Right, right, no, so the the dedication is it's a hundred percent salary. So his salary is covered one hundred percent on this grant. But if we're gonna bring in California Consulting, then that's gonna be an additional expense. That's what we're trying to avoid. So that's why primarily we wanna focus on the staff and training the staff to handle this solely. And 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 that's and it's it's the application process right now. It we're hoping, crossing our fingers, it it gets approved, but it'll.
See why we wouldn't we usually get those?
Yeah.
Especially small communities like Parler.
Yes, so we already have twenty body worn cameras for the officers that are out on patrol. They all have body cameras. So we're asking for another, I believe it's five more cameras in addition to that, uh, the staffing and and the.
Can you kinda explain on the on the body cameras? Because I do get a lot of residents that complain that say that they don't believe that they have them on. I don't know if you've heard that, but I have.
Not yet, not I haven't. We haven't got any complaints about that yet. Uh, I I can look into it. But yes, they download when they every call they go to, they activate their camera. At the end of the day, uh, they download all the data. So we had data ports at at the police department. Um, and that all data is downloaded into the cloud, so it's all available. We have to have that available because this is this is integrated with the Fresno County District Attorney's Office and they have access to all of our our video footage as well. And that's for their prosecution, litigation of criminal cases, so.
Oh, okay.
Just to clarify, Chief, anytime they're out on a call, if there is no video for that call, then you would know that there's something wrong.
Correct, per per policy, uh, every call, it's they're required and mandated to activate their cameras.
Okay, good, because I do get those kinda comments, but I I always say I they should have them on. I don't see how they wouldn't have them on, but I mean, I don't know. Yeah. Okay, all right, is there any questions from the council? Any from our public? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five?
Motion.
Sabrina and Janie, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for yes and uh one absent. And we have um, this one's by a Finance Director as well. Uh, authorizes middle application for California Healthcare Research for the tobacco grant. Okay, is this part of the same one with that Health Collaborative Grant? Because I did get, um, did you ever get that with breaking the chains? Uh, did you?
That's the cannabis grant. That's the cannabis grant.
It's a cannabis one?
Yeah, that's a BSC.
This one is not with them as well?
This isn't the cannabis grant.
Okay, because I don't know what they were doing, but I know that she did come to me and ask me, I I told you, huh?
Yeah, yeah, no, we're we're working on that.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. On this one, we're asking for the authorization to submit this application to the California Healthcare Research and Prevention Tobacco Tax Act of two thousand sixteen, Proposition fifty-six. Funding helps promote a healthy California by reducing illegal retail sales and marketing of cigarettes and tobacco products, including e-cigarettes to minors. We're requesting for two hundred thirty-seven thousand and five hundred fifty-seven. Uh, if approved, this this money is gonna help to promote a healthy California by reducing the illegal sales and marketing of cigarettes and tobacco products, including e-cigarettes to minors. A little bit of background, this grant is gonna fund fifty percent of a community service officer position, ten percent for a sergeant, twenty percent overtime for sworn personnel. And also this grant is gonna help for educational material, signage for retails, equipment, training, and community educational events, and also this one, there's no city match.
Well, that's great. But I have a question. Are we gonna not apply for other grants that can help other things in the community? Because I see a lot for the police department, which is good. But I do also get asked a lot about the existing parks, which I know there's no grant that can help fund the existing parks. But is there anything else that we can do, look into, to get funding? That maybe you guys can talk to um California Consulting to find out what we can receive? Just even some kind of funding where I know that there's that one um that the that grant that we use for the um, the 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 kids that were dis built.
Oh, to take the kids to the parks. That one, yeah, that one's open uh right now.
Do we? Yeah, that's what I, okay, so maybe we can apply for that or something? Talk to uh California Consulting because we need to start working on our existing parks. I know we have two great parks that, well, one that's coming and the other one that we have. But people keep saying that we're not focusing on the existing ones, at least to help beautify or renovate, bring benches, a lot of them want benches, they want barbecue grills and stuff like that to be more inviting because I know that Earl Ruth is one that which we can't probably do too much because and then it'll probably interfere with the roundup when they have the stands out there. So you can't probably put too many benches unless it's one of those that you can move, but then who knows? I don't know if you wanna do that too. I don't know, maybe some ideas that you guys can kinda figure out. Um, because I do get that, I see that a lot on Facebook every time they like, I see all these parks that are are being um being, you know, that we're talking about the new parks that are coming, but what about our exist? Yeah, so maybe you can reach out to them because.
We did ask them to look into like economic development.
Well, there's that one that he's saying.
Yeah, and he's they've actually reached out to Javier on a couple of those. So we do have a couple of those that they're they're researching on to apply. And actually, at the next council meeting, I'll bring forward all of that information and give you an update on all of that.
Yeah, because I think it would be good for the community here that we are focusing on something like that because I do see that a lot on Facebook.
I got something to say. Uh, I got an update with Javier because the Veterans Park's never been touched, just the last time when I had it kind of upgraded, right? Well, he just mentioned to me it's gonna be about a year before we get money for that park, right?
Yeah, um, she's talking about the FEMA grants that we're working on with uh this member with Martha. Um, so we got a program to come in, seven hundred thousand for Veterans Park. So that's gonna renovate it, that that's uh they've they've accepted it through FEMA portal, but it takes a while for it to come come in. Uh, it won't be for the playground. That'll be for the renovation of the of the of the field area, irrigation and the plants and 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 stuff like that. So we can still look for the playground funds. They won't do the playground, but.
Is it only for the the?
The grounds, yeah.
Landscape, yeah.
Please look for some money grant funds for our park. I'm not even sure what to call the little one we have right here on Eric Street. Todd Lot, okay. Yeah, yeah, can they have they call it two different names, I think, to Candace Park. But yeah, that little our park in our district is apparently I was told that um the playground got destroyed or something and that they never was built back on there. So it's really, I mean, I think our children in that community need to have something to be able to do with that park. So if you guys can please look into that one.
That's why with California California Consulting, that's why I'm saying for the existing parks, that way we can get funds. But um if that application is open, then maybe you can help them with that, Javier. So that we can start working on some of those existing parks that have been kinda neglected. So any questions from the public? Do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six?
Motion.
Sabrina and Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for yes and one absent. Okay, um, Bertha, you have any comments?
Yeah, real quick, I just I just wanna thank all the staff and uh, you know, all the divisions are working really hard, especially during this really extreme uh extreme inclement weather with the heat. Um, so I really appreciate all the hard work they're doing. I also wanna thank the Measure Q Oversight Committee. They've had uh two meetings so far and we're looking forward to the next meeting. They're really doing a good job. We appreciate them. That's it.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming today and and keep asking questions. Like Sandra's saying, it is your tax dollars. Everybody should be asking questions and backup paperwork when you do ask. It's really important that the community does know what's happening. I appreciate when people reach out to me and I explain to them and I show them what I can show them. There's things that they can come in and they can ask for. Um, I wanna thank our Finance Director that he's they're moving on and Bertha, Chief, and the rest of the staff that are working really hard to try to get our city back on our feet after all the changes that we've had this last year and a half. Um, just appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Um, first of all, I just wanted to thank our staff. Again, with the changes that have been happening in the last few months. Thank them for just trying to keep the city going forward. Um, I know the new Finance Director was brought in at a difficult time for the city, but you know what, um, I know he has that budget ready for us um in the next couple of weeks. Um, and looking forward to that. Um, I did prepare a public co- I mean, yeah, public uh council comment for our June meeting. So this is like a month late, but I did wanna say, you know, had this to say from June. I would, first of all, this is from my June meeting that I was supposed to say that. I would like to first of all, express my disappointment with the city for having a council meeting on June sixth, which was was Parler High School Graduation Day. I had requested to reschedule the regular meeting since November twenty twenty-three to our city manager then, and it was not put on to the agenda. And it was put on the agenda and approved until February twenty twenty-four to cancel the June sixth meeting. I unfortunately did not realize that it was put on the consent calendar on May thirty-first to have a re- a meeting rescheduled again on June sixth. That was my mistake in not pulling that item for discussion. For that, that I do apologize to the Parler community for having a council meeting on that day as most of our community members were attending graduation or celebrating graduations in other communities with family. My absence that day was due to attending Parler High School Graduation Ceremony and Sober Grad Event. Second, as for my absence at the multiple special meetings, was due to legal advice that was given prior to these multiple meetings and the fact that I did have prior commitments on those days. My absence does not mean that I side or in favor of certain individuals. I base my decisions on legal advice from the legal counsel and what I feel is best to protect the city and myself as an elected official. I was not comfortable attending after legal advice was given and also personally felt that the process with the agenda item was not being executed properly. If I find that I was given inaccurate information, I will address that at a later time. We as a council may not always agree, but I respect the opinions and the decisions of others sitting up here. We are all held accountable for our own decisions and actions. I would like to thank the city office staff for all their work in trying to move the city forward. We as a council need to be considerate of our staff's time during their working hours and know that city staff are not available at all times of the workday as they are paid to do an eight-hour job that needs to be done before answering council call phone calls or requests. We do not have a full-time council assistant who is available to all of us, all five of us, at one time. Please be patient when asking for information and mindful of their time and workspace. That was for us up here. We just need to be a little more mindful of those who are working for the city. Again, we we don't work at City Hall. We are elected to do a job up here that um to approve things and procedures and process. Um, a lot of items that are brought to us, we cannot um go into detail with the public. Um, a lot of a lot of it is personal. Um, a lot of our decisions are based on information that's given that cannot be shared out to the public. Sometimes some things are you're misinformed of situations and things and sometimes public, the public knows before I know. So it's a little frustrating um when we're getting attacked up here with certain information that has already been given out. Um, again, just us as council need to be mindful of our decisions. And again, we are and respect each each of our decisions. Again, that was for my last meeting and our last month's meeting. And um I just thank you for being our staff for being patient with us and continuing to move the city forward. Thank you.
I also agree with Sabrina. We need to uh take into consideration consideration to the staff has a lot on their plate too. Especially our new Finance Director when he said he's working on prior prior uh years of finance and that's hard. And then to keep up with what's going on now, but thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Torki? Make sure you have it on.
It's on.
Okay.
So I'm now appointed by the Fresno Cog. I'm the new Public at Large Representative. I'll be giving updates to all the communities, not just Parler. So I'm excited.
Congratulations, I did see that. Yeah, congratulations. Um, I I know it's uh, what what committee?
The Public at Large Representative. The Public at Large Representative.
But it's a, it's a committee, I did see that it had like.
Well, there's different ones, there's a transportation, a Measure C. I'm working with an infectious doctor also for updates, you know.
That's good.
So, yeah.
So if you guys, um, if you ever are interested in in getting involved and stuff like that, Michelle actually looked into it, went to the website and did her research, finding out about these committees that are out there. And she did ask me, what's this about? I'm like, I don't know.
There's several committees to join.
Because it, there's several committees that they have for different transportation, Measure C.
Housing specialists, energy specialists, different ones.
So if you guys wanted to get involved in those things, it's always good to look in the, in the website. You'll be surprised on how many other organizations are out there that you can really get involved and be helpful even for this community because that helps you be the voice for the city of Parlier as well in representing, um, not just Parlier but other cities, but be more a voice for Parlier, too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Javier?
Yeah, um, just a quick update. So we have four projects in construction right now, big projects, TCP project, Fictory Park, downtown facade, and our urban flooding project. Those are the big ones besides other ones, but. And as part of the urban flooding project, we're installing the pipeline here on, uh, in downtown on K Street. So they are closing down the intersection of Fresno and K as we cross over to, go make our way south on K. And so just keep an eye out for that. We've already noticed all the residents and let them know that we will be shutting off the intersection so we can cross it. And the project's ongoing. And the Manning Avenue is closed out, so we we're lucky to have that. And then, so we're just gonna keep trucking along, trying to get these projects done before the end of this year.
That's great, thank you. Jeff?
I have nothing useful to add, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Okay, um, and you just reminded me on the actual notification for residents that you say that we're supposed to do. I did see on on social media that there was a lot of complaints that, uh, I guess the water was shut off. I don't know if you've seen that, uh, they were shut off and that they didn't get proper notification. And I think someone said that they had, that staff had said that they were mailing out notices. But from what I recall is that they go, actually put notification on their doors for the people that are gonna be affected. So maybe find out with staff and what's the proper procedure. I don't know if that's what they did or not.
I think they did go out door to door, but I think that it was a larger area that they didn't, weren't aware was gonna be affected.
I explained, I explained that on Facebook.
I think you needed, giving my time, you had your time, thank you. So the thing is, is that when they have those situations, it's always best to put it in a larger area. And if it's only a smaller area that's affected, it's actually, they they will be notified still in case, but.
We asked, well, we directed them to let us know ahead of time so that we could post it on Facebook and our our city website and the, um, sign outside just so that, um, more people will be aware of it, even if it's not their exact area, they'll know about it before.
Yeah, because, um, I think that those, uh, the residents were really upset about that because it did, um, for people that work or have to get ready, whatever may be the situation, you know, it's, when you don't have water, it's not good. That's one of the things I wanted to mention. And the other thing, I wanna thank Javier. I know I said it before, where we had that trail for the educational trail, but we also have another trail that was, um, I was just advised by our Executive Director from Fresno Council of Governments that we were awarded, uh, what was it I told you, two point five million?
Two point five.
Two point five million for another trail in town. So this way, I think it's the one that's gonna be connecting, um, you know where the area is at, can you kinda?
So it it it's, if you see, there's always a lot of kids walking from Veterans Park on that dirt path, walking all the way to here, right behind the Evelope Department. So we applied to, uh, for an application and we received it to to build out the trail starting at Veterans Park, the basketball area, and connecting them down to Parlier Avenue.
Yeah, and so I, with, he did tell me that with the application that Javier did submit was one of the top applications that ranked the highest. So I'm very proud, I'd say, well, that's why we have them here, because, you know, he does this fantastic job. And that's because before you didn't really submit, you weren't like used to submitting applications with grants and stuff like that. Uh, and I think you, now that you do it more often, you're getting better and better at it. So I'm glad that we have you there and representing the city of Parlier. They they were amazed with what you presented. So I didn't get to see the application, but I did, was happy that we're getting funds to beautify our town and make it a lot more appealing and where you can actually take a walk and take your dog for a walk, make it to where it's a safe area, just like the way, I'm so glad, even with just, just with this one item that we, I presented in in Washington DC to our Congress and the representatives. With just, he worked on it, I don't even know, I think he worked on it very quickly. It wasn't even something that you worked on it for months. It was something that he worked like in maybe two weeks or three weeks. And he put it together because I said, I wanna take something to, uh, to Washington DC so that we can present, so we can get funding for it. And he's like, well, let me think about something. And then we're talking about the trail, he said, let's do that trail. And he, he got something together within those three weeks. And we're getting one point eight million just to start the the first phase of that project. And that's just for him working on it within those three weeks. He had a real tight timeline and he got it done, and we're getting those funds. And Jim Costa's gonna be here to tour tomorrow. He's gonna be here with Serta and myself at the, at the Police Department because he wants to see what your, what the plans are, because we did receive funds from him as well, another million dollars for the renovations of the, of the Police Department. Because we had two point five from Melissa Hurtado, Hurtado, the state senator here. And then, um, now we're getting from Jim Costa another million to help with those renovations. So he wants to be there so that he can see, uh, the progress and what, I don't know if we're gonna have like the plans of what we're looking at, so that way he can see what we're actually doing with those funds.
I'll have the architectural plans, the blueprints laid out.
Oh, good, so, uh, he will be here tomorrow, so that's great news. Thank you. And we did also meet, uh, via Zoom, Chief and I and Javier. I included him because I always wanna include him because I said, you can throw whatever you think that might, we might need. Because you just wanted to see what, if there was anything that we needed, any assistance and anything. Because that's the thing I like about, you know, when you have representation like that, that actually reaches out to you to want to help your city, that is what we always need. We need those representatives that actually care about their, uh, their communities that they represent. And one thing I can tell you with Ana Caballero, she's one of the persons that will reach out to you. Her staff will do the same, and Jim Costa does the same. That's why I always work with them. And whatever they need from me, letters of support for things that they're pushing forward, whatever I can do to help them. And stop laughing, Kathy, that's, that's just disrespectful. So, um, to me, you know, it's, it's a, it's a team effort in trying to help them and they can help us. That way, they know that I will support what they they need to get whatever they're trying to accomplish. Of course, it's gonna always affect all of us, and if it's something that's good, I will support it. But I'm glad that we are, I think we mentioned a few things that we were working on. Maybe like funding for, extra funding for the park, which we can't do it with this budget, it's already been approved. But we can figure something out for future, uh, projects that we might need. Again, like maybe we can focus on the, um, existing parks that are not so, are being funded right now. But maybe we can get some money to allocate, to get it budgeted for us so that we can work on those, um, projects. So that's all I wanted to say, I wanna thank everybody for being here, too. It's always about getting together and team effort and working on the things that matter. Uh, and the community like this matters a lot to me. So, thank you. And meeting adjourned.